Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Wednesday, February 2, 2022. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rauer. Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Ray Rauer.
All right, thank you. Time to adopt our agenda this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Grischoviac to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that is adopted. We don't have any proclamations or presentations, and we are up to approval of the minutes from the January 18 meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Aye, second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Hernandez. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items on our consent agenda this evening. The first, excuse me, is to approve a therapeutic massage enterprise license for Artisan LLC, 2607 South Heights Drive. Ms. Corka has indicated that she has plans to open a massage enterprise business. The background investigation and license fee for a therapeutic massage enterprise license have been paid. Proof of the required liability insurance has also been provided. Approval of the massage enterprise license is contingent upon the Police Department background investigation findings and the approval of a home occupation permit granted by the Planning Commission. So we're looking to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to Artisan LLC located at 2607 South Heights Drive Northwest pending a successful background investigation. And it says, and the granting of a home occupation permit by the Planning Commission. Didn't they just do this, though? Because it was at the last meeting. So, all right, so that's one fewer steps. And then item three is to approve a therapeutic massage enterprise license for Angie's Custom Massage and Bodywork LLC, 10148 Raven Street Northwest. Ms. Copeland has indicated that she has plans to open a massage enterprise business, and the background investigation and license fee for a therapeutic massage enterprise license has been paid. Proof of the required liability insurance has also been provided. Approval of the license is contingent upon the Police Department background investigation findings. And I'm going to skip that last part, then. So we are looking to approve the issuance of a therapeutic massage enterprise license to Angie's Custom Massage and Bodywork LLC located at 10148 Raven Street Northwest pending a successful background investigation. Item four is to authorize execution of amended joint powers agreement for the street maintenance materials contract. And we are part of a very large coalition of cities. And we're adding one more. The city of Rogers has expressed interest in joining the group to participate in the 2022 street maintenance activities. And on January 11, 2022, the Rogers City Council adopted a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint powers agreement and participation in our program. And the Tenth Amendment need only be executed by the cities of Coon Rapids and Rogers. And this will now bring our group. I don't even know if we have them all together, but it's like Coon Rapids and over Brooklyn Center, Columbia Heights, Fridley, Ham Lake, East Bethel, Lenoham, Amata Bedi, Circle Pines, Mounds View, Arden Hills, St. Francis, and now Rogers if we add this. And it just gives us a real economy of scale buying power when we go to get our seal coating and road striping and things. So we're looking to authorize execution of the Tenth Amendment to the joint powers agreement, adding Rogers to the North Metro Regional Street Maintenance Consortium. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item five on this evening's agenda, is to accept the right-of-entry agreement with Conforty Holdings. At the December 16, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, Conforty Holdings received conditional site plan approval to construct a building expansion and other site improvements at 8945 Evergreen Boulevard. And the right-of-entry agreement allows the city to periodically enter the property to exercise hydrants, valves, and to flush the water main system. The utility and drainage system within the site is considered private, and the property owner will continue to own and maintain these items. This right-of-entry agreement simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate fire protection. So we're looking to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with Conforty Holdings for a 34,500 square foot addition to the existing research facility. Item six is to adopt Resolution 22-27, accepting grant funds from Coon Creek Watershed District and approve the water quality cost share agreement. This is for the purchase of two sets of Joma, J-O-M-A, it's an acronym for something, cutting-edge snow plow blades. And these blades are designed to better follow the contour of roads, thus reducing the need for excess salt and anti-ice chemical treatments in an effort to reduce the effects of chloride loading on water bodies. The city was awarded up to $8,400 of the purchase cost, which is 50%. And the Coon Creek Watershed District agrees to disperse 80% of the approved cost share amounts once the attached agreement is executed, and the city will implement the project by December 31, 2022. And the Coon Creek Watershed District will disperse any additional remaining funds upon proof of completion. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 22-27, accepting grant funds from the Coon Creek Watershed District and authorize execution of the water quality cost share agreement. And that award was up to $8,387.88. Two items left on the consent agenda. Item seven is to adopt Resolution 22-229, I'm sorry, 22-29, approving the Sustainability Commission appointments. Kelsey Brode submitted an application for the Sustainability Commission. After discussion with the applicant, the Sustainability Commission recommended her appointment to the commission with a term expiring December 31, 2024. And with the resignation of Commissioner Annie Hendrick, who served as the co-chair of the commission, we need to appoint a new co-chair for the commission, and the commission has recommended Chris Bacchus' appointment as co-chair of the commission for the year 2022. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 22-29, appointing Kelsey Brode to the Sustainability Commission with a term expiring December 31, 2024, and appointing Chris Bacchus as co-chair of the Sustainability Commission for the year 2022. And with all due apologies if I've mispronounced either of those names, I probably did. The last item on our consent agenda is item eight, to adopt Resolution 22-30, authorizing cooperative agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety and adopt Resolution 22-31, accepting the victim services grant. The Minnesota Department of Public Safety Office of Justice Programs sought proposals from county and city attorney offices to fund a victim-witness advocate position. This position provides services to crime victims, ensuring crime victim rights are upheld and increasing victim's safety and access to services that meet their needs. The city attorney's office, Coon Rapids City Attorney's Office, was first awarded the grant in October of 2017. The funding enhances, not replaces, existing services for crime victims by having the victim service staff be in court with an attorney to improve victim contact. Further, the funding helps the city attorney's office meet statutory requirements by enhancing information referrals for victims and providing victims greater assistance and advocacy. The victim service staff is under the supervision of the city attorney. Under the proposal, state and federal funding is available to directly service the needs of crime victims, and the grant will provide $70,000 per year for a two-year period beginning October of 2021. And this is a two-year renewal grant. So we are looking to adopt Resolution 22-30, authorizing execution of the grant agreement by the city attorney, and Resolution 22-31 to accept victim service grant from Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Justice Programs, and to authorize execution of the agreement. Yeah, that was, yeah, got it.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I move approval, authorization, acceptance, and adoption of the various items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson. Any discussion or questions from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
I could just get a question on that grant, the last item on here. Does that grant, does that allow us, do we hire an additional staff, or is those duties kind of absorbed within the city attorney's office already?
Mayor, Councilmember Grischoviac, we did hire a person back in 2000, I think actually started late 2017, as a separate victim-witness advocate and has been in our office since. A couple of things. I was just looking, we just met with Fridley today, and I was just looking at my notes. We had about 2,400 separate victim crime contacts. That was in 2021. We were pretty dang close to that in 2021, so that, you know, kind of shows the value of that. We also share, I mean, the $70,000 doesn't cover the complete salary anymore, but we do share those costs, and Fridley helps share with those costs that aren't covered by the grant, so it really has been a benefit to both us and Fridley.
Excellent, thank you.
Good. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. We are on to item nine now, which is a public hearing to consider Resolution 22-28, approving capital improvement plan and preliminary approval to issue capital improvement bonds. We are getting ready to buy a fire station.
Yep.
And it's very expensive, so we're looking to do about $15 million in bonds here. Mr. Stemwaddle, do you want me to read the discussion, or Francine, do you want to do something with this, or?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Nick Anhut from Ellers is here via video conference to present the public hearing details to council and the public.
All right. So after Nick, then we'll do the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Welcome, Nick.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates. Happy to be discussing this with you all today. Minnesota statutes, bonding statutes, does allow for a municipality such as the city to issue debt to either acquire land or improve a site for purposes of a public facility serving a governmental function such as a city hall, public safety facilities, police facility, fire facility, or even a library, as long as it goes through certain proceedings, one of those which we are here tonight. So the requirement is that the council hold a public hearing to discuss the potential issuance of debt for the intended project, and it also must identify that project within a capital improvement plan that discusses various factors for its consideration. As part of your agenda this evening, there was a document prepared, a five-year projection of the city's intent to utilize this statute to finance facilities, the fire station being the lone facility that is anticipated in that timeframe, and issue an amount of up to $15 million in general obligation-backed bonds to improve and construct that facility. That document does identify the various factors that the council is to consider, and I will read them for you. First, it's to evaluate the condition of the city's existing infrastructure, including need for repair and replacement, likely demand for the intended improvements for the facility, the estimated cost of the facility, available public resources to fund that facility, the level of overlapping debt within the community, costs and benefits of alternative uses of the funds to repay the debt, and the operating costs of the proposed facility improvements. The document does identify responses to each of those. Notably, the city engaged old architects in the past to engage in a facility space needs assessment that did go through and evaluate this as a essential function and need within the community. And so Fire Station 3 was identified for a full replacement of the facility and is in high demand. As far as the repayment source of the bonds, the city is intending to rely on implementing a new debt service tax levy to repay the debt associated. We are estimating the project to be roughly $15 million at this time. That is the not-to-exceed amount under these proceedings. And we intend that the bonds would be potentially issued after the project is bid out, the construction contracts are known, and the amount could potentially be lower, subject to, you know, receiving favorable bids. All that said, the intended repayment of the bonds is likely to cost somewhere in the realm of $900,000 to over $1 million per year, depending on how we restructure the repayment of those bonds. The CIP document itself shows two different examples of a 20-year repayment with a roughly $1,023,000 per year levy associated with it, as well as an alternative example of a 25-year repayment, just under $900,000 per year. These are based on our estimates of the potential interest rates for a financing moving ahead at the later portion of potentially of this year. We have included some conservative estimates, anticipating in case rates do rise, that the rates that we are assuming within those projections are much higher than are observed today in the marketplace and are providing suitable cushion for your budgetary purposes. All that said, this proceeding does require that the council open and hold a public hearing so that the public can bring forward any concerns or support for the intended project. Once that hearing is held, the council can adopt this document through a resolution that has been provided within your agenda packets, and that resolution will start a 30-day petition period where the local voters, as long as at least 5% of the votes cast in the last general election are represented by a signed petition, they can petition the city to place this bonding measure on a future referendum or on a ballot so that it can be decided by the voters. Once that 30-day window is closed, then that period of time is completed. It is no longer valid. If there has not been a petition received, then at that point, the authority to choose to issue the debt rests with the city council. They would be empowered with that authority. And we anticipate that should all that come forward, the council would be asked to consider executing a financing at some point, once we understand the final costs and scope of the fire station project after it has been bid out. So with that, I will conclude my remarks, but I'll certainly be on hand to answer any questions as part of the public hearing, or certainly if the council has any as well. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Nick. Does anybody have any questions for Nick from Ellers? Mr. Stemwaddle, why do you have your hand up?
Mayor, Council, just some additional commentary. You know, the $15 million number was sort of an assumption based on what we would expect the maximum amount we would need to bond for. What we actually end up bonding for will depend on a number of factors, including where the bids come back, how much we feel like we need to bond for in 2022, how we spread that out into 2023. There's also been a request at the legislature for potential state funding, so there are a number of factors in play, but ultimately what this does is put the public on notice that there is the potential for bonding to happen, what the specific project for it is for, and what the bond amount might be, such that if there was some pushback, that they'd have an opportunity to do that. So the council's not being asked to issue any bond, any bonds tonight. It's simply laying the groundwork for what might come down the road.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any questions? All right, so then, in the case of, whoop, I'm on the wrong item. Back up here. So in the case of Resolution 22-28, approving a capital improvement plan and preliminary approval to issue capital improvement bonds. All right, so this, basically, we're opening a public hearing on a $15 million general obligation capital improvement bond. We'll open the public hearing. Is anybody here to address counsel over the $15 million capital improvement bond for a new fire station? Everybody loves their fire department. All right, well, request one more time, anybody here to address counsel for a public hearing on the $15 million capital improvement bond? Seeing none, is that good enough, Nick? You seem like you're my advisor tonight. All right, well, then we'll close the public hearing and reserve comments to the council. Or, Nick, you guys, you're going to finish your little Nick show, then.
I think he's done his Nick show.
Is he done? I thought he was, I thought he had more if we, after we had the public hearing. No?
Mayor, I'm standing for any of your questions. You're just required to hold the public hearing.
All right.
Address any public comments and consider that resolution.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-28, approving a capital improvement plan and giving preliminary approval to the issuance of capital improvement bonds.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
If I could ask, when the time comes to bond, and we don't know what that number will be yet, will, will Ellers can put that out with the option for 20-year repayment and 30-year repayment, or do we decide that before that happens?
Nick?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we could have numerous discussions about how to best structure that, but yes, before that offering comes forward, we typically will get authorization from the council when it is ready to move forward and issue those bonds. At that point in time, I do anticipate a conversation in a council meeting setting that would identify the amount of financing that we'd be seeking, as well as a structure for the repayment. So we would, we would get the council's approval to move ahead with the appropriate repayment term, whatever is deemed most beneficial to the city, given the final amount.
Yep, makes sense, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Just, just a few notes. So Fire Station 3, for those of you who aren't sure where it is, it's the one on 113th, kind of right off of Crooked Lake Boulevard, behind the old Family Center Mall. That building has a lot of issues, and the choices are to spend an awful lot of money to try and fix it now and limp through, and it's just, would be kind of a waste of money because we would have to replace or do something soon. So the choice that we've moved forward with is looking at the new building. If you look at the city newsletter, there are illustrations of what that building would look like, and the new location would be near the old Cook Arena site. So if you want to learn anything more about the potential fire station, that's what this bonding would be for, and it's available on the website in the newsletter.
I'm wondering how long that Cook site's going to be relevant, irrelevant, you know, like Johnson's Barn that's been gone for 25 years, you know, the old Cook Ice Arena.
Actually, Johnson's Barn's been a lot longer than that.
I'm sure there's more than one. All right, do we have any other discussion on this?
Here.
Mr. Brody?
I do want to point out, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but it does require two-thirds, and when we only have six here, it would require unanimous vote tonight.
Oh, okay, very good. All right, so does anybody have any questions before we vote, if we're going to need a unanimous vote? Look at me.
You could feel the eyes penetrating him.
Didn't mean anything by that, you're just, you know, kind of the budget hawk, you know.
Let's look at this one.
All right, so hearing no more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries 6-0, Mr. Brody. All right, anything else, Nick, or are we good? Till next time.
Good, Mr. Mayor, we'll, we'll talk next time.
Perfect. Good to see you.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
All right. Next, item 10. I saw, I saw massage parlors, I went, we already did all these licensing things. Oh, that's, that's right. We're going to consider it an ordinance, 2258, repealing Chapter 5-1800, saunas, massage parlors, and similar adult-oriented services, masseurs and masseuses. And what this is, this is a housekeeping thing. We ended up with redundant ordinances, so we introduced this at our last meeting, and tonight we'll just be, if it's approved, we'll be removing, repealing this particular ordinance. It's not used, and should anyone apply for licensure to operate under this section of the code, it would circumvent the educational and training requirements that are in place through the therapeutic massage section of the code. So it's been replaced.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'd move adoption of ordinance 2258, which is an ordinance repealing Chapter 5-1800 in the city code.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I just want to, again, I did this at the introduction, but I just want to thank city staff. This has been part of a project of identifying things that frankly don't make sense in the city code, given other parts of the statutes and applicable laws and rules and regulations and things like that. And it's just a nice thing that the city staff is doing to clean up the code and make it fit right, so we just don't have nonsense rules on the books. So thank you.
All right, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second here. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we're doing a similar thing here, except it's not redundant, it just doesn't seem needed. We're looking to, we're looking to adopt ordinance 2259, repealing Section 5-1900, conversation parlors. Also a housekeeping item to clean up the city's code as it relates to conversation parlors. It is an antiquated practice that is no longer utilized nor needed in the city's code. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinance repealing Section 5-1900. There are still a few communities that do have these, so if you do need to open one, you could probably go to one of those.
Your Honor, I'll make the same motion if I can.
All right.
To adopt ordinance 2259 and ordinance repealing Code Section 5-1900 in its entirety.
Second.
All right. Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Do we got anything on speakeasies or anything like that?
We probably should, because those are getting popular now. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to item 12, to consider, under new business, to consider a preliminary plat 8840, 8850, Evergreen Boulevard. Mr. Brown.
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. I can be pretty brief, this is a fairly straightforward one. We have a preliminary plat application. The Planning Commission considered this one, recommended approval back in December, so it is coming before you this evening, just because of our meeting schedule in January. This relates to the former Honeywell property on Evergreen Boulevard, now occupied by two tenants, one, the Alina Customers Experience Center, also a new tenant, which is Omnetix Connector Corporation in the remainder of the building. The owner is looking to subdivide into two parcels. You can see the smaller lot, Lot 2, in the southwest corner of the site, looking to do that, accommodate a future industrial building. You can see on this slide how about a 32,000-square-foot industrial building might lay out on that. You can see on this slide how about a 32,000 square foot industrial building might lay out on that site. Both lots meet the size requirements allowed by the zoning code. Planning Commission, again, recommended approval. I can answer any questions, I believe the applicant has joined us via Zoom.
All right, thank you. And those are trucks backed up to a dock. I had to blow it up to see what those were, I thought that's what they must be. All right, anybody have any questions, Mr. Brown on this?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion in planning case 21-50 to approve the preliminary plat with the following condition, that all engineering comments be addressed.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, approve, opposed, and that is approved. All right, Mr. Brown, I see you're standing there, I bet we're gonna talk about Mercy now.
Yes, so on item 13, this is a site plan for an addition to Mercy Hospital in the ambulance bay area. Typically, site plans just go to Planning Commission, however, in the port zoning districts, they also go to council, so that's why you're seeing this. This is actually a fairly small addition, just about 7,200 square feet. Normally, those additions that are smaller than 15% of the building area don't even go through a formal review. However, since this one involves some changes to the circulations, new overhead doors, we thought it made sense to, to still bring it through the process. So you can see here, this addition would be on the west side of the building along Dakota Street, would extend the building a little bit further west, change the, the circulation to the north of that. Would add some ambulance bays, you can see overhead doors facing north. The exterior materials generally match the masonry on the existing building. And that's about it, I can answer any questions, I believe as with the previous item. A representative of the applicant is joining us via Zoom.
Very good.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
In planning case 21-55, I'd move approval of the proposed site plan to extend the ambulance bays with the following conditions, number one, all engineering comments be addressed, sustainability comments are addressed, and a site security agreement can be entered into with the city.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler, discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
For anybody who has driven through the old bay in an ambulance like me, you know, I think this is a wonderful addition to the hospital, so the more you can do it inside is better.
Yes.
Especially on cold days.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Mercy is such a good partner for us that we're very happy to support whatever they need there. And let's see, you're not leaving, so I bet we're gonna talk about planning case 2138 Use Flexibility Hybrid Warehouse Self-Storage Facility. I've had a lot of pushback from the neighbors.
They've been pretty supportive so far.
Maybe, maybe pushback wasn't the right word.
Yeah, you, you will if this goes wrong.
Push forward, yeah.
So this, this site, of course, on the 3,500 block of Coon Rapids Boulevard, currently occupied by the former Pedersen Floral Greenhouse, which is in quite a state of disrepair. U-Haul, which obviously operates the adjacent facility, has purchased the property, is proposing a, a new building on this site. The Planning Commission considered a site plan for it at its January meeting and approved it, because this is not in the port district. That approval was final, it was not appealed. There was a condition, though, of approval, that the request for a use flexibility is approved by the city council. In, in this case, staff kind of went back and forth. The initial application had been for an, for an indoor self-storage facility. Ultimately, we felt that this was a, a little bit of a unique facility, didn't completely meet the definition of an indoor self-storage facility. We felt it had some characteristics more of a warehouse, so that's why ultimately we advocated for going the route of use flexibility with the site plan approval. So the site plan is for about a 17,000 square foot building. It would be used to store, storage containers known as U-boxes that U-Haul offers. They would be containers that are delivered to a customer's house, picked up, returned to the storage facility. Customers would have some ability to access them at the facility, although by and large, it would be a, a building that would, would mostly be used to store those containers. It would have about nine parking spaces on the east side of the building. Stormwater detention to the north along 115th there. The Planning Commission did add a condition, and you can see along this paved area that there is internal circulation added between the two U-Haul properties. And actually, that does relate to this use flexibility request, and that one of the findings for that does address kind of integration with other, with other uses, and by providing that circulation, it, it does that. Here are the building elevations, generally an architectural metal panel with some brick does meet the window requirements in the River Rapids Overlay District. And actually, this site plan does not require any dimensional or design flexibility, just, just the request for use flexibility. You can see here, a perspective drawing, so the building would be oriented toward the street with the, the parking alongside, and loading would occur in, in the back of it. So this use flexibility request, again, is for this hybrid warehouse self-storage use. Just a reminder on the findings you need to make for that, and these are outlined pretty well in the staff report. Staff feels that it meets all four of these findings pretty well. So the first one addresses unique circumstances of the development or the site. You know, we, we feel that as a, a pretty dilapidated site at present, getting it redeveloped is, is a pretty big priority for the city. There's some other unique circumstances just related to its location adjacent to U-Haul's other facility. Second finding related to gain efficiencies, better integration of uses. As I said before, you know, U-Haul operates its truck rental business as well as its self-storage facility next door. This proposed use is very complimentary to those, and, and I think demonstrates a good integration of uses. Public amenities, reduction in environmental impact. This is a site that currently doesn't have any stormwater treatment. Everything just goes into a pipe, so with this redevelopment, everything would be treated on-site, so pretty significant improvement in environmental impact. Third finding related to site amenities and, and buffers. As I mentioned, this request really complies with all of the site plan standards. There aren't requests for any sort of deviation from them. It meets the window requirement, offers high-quality building materials, generally has a good street presence. As the neighbors have noted, there is an adequate landscape buffer proposed between the site and the adjacent residential properties. And then the fourth finding, advancing the intent of this section of the code. Obviously, this project doesn't interfere with any other city-initiated redevelopment projects. Generally advances the priorities of the River Rapids Overlay District, which include having a nice building edge along the street, having good landscaping, high-quality building materials. So staff is recommending in favor of this, the Planning Commission at its January meeting also recommended in favor. Can I answer any questions? I believe as with the previous two items, we have a couple representatives of the applicant on Zoom.
Very good. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Brown or applicant? I didn't, I didn't, I, I watched the Planning Commission, and I heard them talking about the, the connection. I'm glad to see that it's behind the building. I didn't want to see that in the front where that became the, like, the relief exit for all the trucks and trailers on the Coon Rapids Boulevard. I like the thought of them going through the intersection, but I thought that makes sense to have that connection there. All right, no questions?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
In planning case 21-38, I'd move approval of use flexibility for a hybrid indoor storage slash warehousing use. Finding that the modification is necessary to respond to the site conditions will result in better integration of uses or additional public amenities, and will further the intent of the River Rapids Overlay District as described in the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson, discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, I would like to thank GAF for working on this. The original proposal coming in, you know, and looking to try and do conditional use or something, because this truly is more of a warehouse-type building, and with that, setting a precedent could mean that we could have warehouses in places within the city that we really didn't want. Going to the use flexibility, making the sites integral to the existing U-Haul use, tying those together allows us to move forward with the proposal without any unintended impacts throughout the rest of the city. So I appreciate staff working through this with the applicant to get to a solution that is workable for the whole city.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I'd also like to thank the Planning Commission as well. I, you know, I attended one of the Planning Commission meetings and watched another one, and, and there was a real robust discussion about this. And this is really a kind of a unique business model that didn't fit or exist even at the time that the code was written about indoor storage versus traditional warehousing. And so I understand the, the kind of rub with the code, but finding a way to bring people together and, and really have a meaningful conversation about how to get to a yes for a project like this, when it takes care of a, a very difficult piece of property that the city has had for a long time, that has a lot of other unique features. I just think this can be a good addition to the neighborhood, and I want to thank the neighbors who have come out to talk to the city, attend Planning Commission meetings, really give insight into the value of this project in that neighborhood. Thank you.
I would ditto those, those thank yous, and I, particularly to the neighbors who have been through multiple projects on this.
They sure have.
From large apartments to whatever. And I thank you for paying attention, and thank you for, thank you for being, for living here. Thank you for coming in and letting us know that we found one that you liked. Thank you, U-Haul for putting it together.
Right.
All right, hey, let's see, we have a motion and a second, do we have any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Thank you, thank you all. Almost probably seems a little anticlimactic, but here we are. It's the process. Thank you. And Mr. Brown, we are going to consider design flexibility for a 10,600 square foot retail building, 10524 Hanson Boulevard.
That's right, so this application relates to a vacant piece of land at the southwest corner of Hanson and Coon Rapids Boulevard, currently owned by the adjacent Methodist Church. It's just about, just under an acre in size. You might remember, a while back, we worked with the church to convey a small triangular piece of city-owned property to make the site a little more developable. The church has, has marketed it over the last year or two. Dollar General is proposing a 10,600 square foot store at this location. The Planning Commission recommend, or the Planning Commission approved a site plan for this project at its January meeting. That decision was not appealed, so that is final. So the only aspect of the project that is coming before you tonight is a request for design flexibility related to the window requirement. But nonetheless, quick overview of the site plan. Parking would be located to the east of the building. The main entrance would be kind of at the northeast corner. Vehicular access would be off of the service road there, south side of the site. Here's the landscaping plan, we worked with the applicant pretty extensively on this. So landscaping is in compliance with, with standards. Here are the building elevations, primarily Nitiha fiber cement panel with some CMU as well, and metal accents. The elevation that the window requirement applies to is the north elevation, so the one there at the top, that would be facing Coon Rapids Boulevard. Basically, the code requires that 60% of the frontage between a height of three and eight feet needs to consist of transparent glass. And transparent glass is defined as that, that allows views in and out of the building to a distance of four feet. In this instance, they are proposing some transparent glass. It does fall under the 60% requirement within that three-to-eight-foot height limit. They're proposing opaque spandrel glass in several locations. So the transparent glass would be at closest to the building entrance at the corner, as well as in the clear story windows that have been added farther up on the elevation. Those, those would be transparent. The more eye-level windows, with the exception of those near the entrance, would be the opaque glass. The applicant has indicated that they are designing those window openings so that they actually are window openings and could be replaced with transparent windows down the road. Overall, staff was comfortable with this request. The Planning Commission ultimately recommended in favor of it for a couple reasons. And you might remember from my previous presentation, the, the flexibility findings, one just relates to unique circumstances around the site. In this case, the Coon Rapids Boulevard right of way is quite wide. So the building, while it's not actually set back very far from the property line, it's quite a distance from the street or the sidewalk. Further, there is a stand of mature trees right there, which the applicant is not proposing to disrupt. So the visibility of this elevation from Coon Rapids Boulevard would be somewhat concealed. Staff has also noted that the elevation does include over 60% transparent glass, just not within that three-to-eight-foot band that the code requires. So acknowledging that it is a small site, you know, and that can accommodate really just a small retail building like this, there is probably a need to have shelving up against that wall. So having the windows higher up near the entrance, we feel is, is pretty reasonable in this case. So we felt that it met the findings for flexibility. Again, we have worked with this applicant, so that this is really the only flexibility request for this project and, and otherwise represents a, a nice-looking building. So I can answer any other questions. I believe we have a representative of the applicant in the audience as well.
Mr. Brown, how does this compare with? I, I just remember when Walgreens was built down at Crooked Lake and Coon Rapids Boulevard, there was a lot of discussion about the glass frontage. And I, and it seemed like Walgreens had to make a lot of adaptations to fit our rules for Coon Rapids Boulevard. Are we, are, are we being equitable, I guess, is my, is my question. Have we, did we run them through the wringer tighter than this one, or not?
That, that was long enough ago, I, I don't remember all, all the details on that one. I, I will say, you know, on that site, the building is much closer to the sidewalk, much more visible from the sidewalk. A big part of the reason we're more comfortable with this is just because of the location of this building and kind of those unique circumstances around the site, and, and the fact that those trees are, are generally going to be reserved.
Those, those differences weren't lost on me, I just felt I owed it to them to mention it.
So Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I am going to make a motion in planning case 21-49 to approve the design flexibility for less than 60% glass on the primary building facade that is transparent to a distance of four feet into the building. Finding that the modification is necessary to respond to site conditions will reside and result in better integration of uses or additional public amenities, and will further the intent of the River Rapids Overlay District.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, and a second by Carlson, is there further discussion?
Your Honor, just a quick question.
All right, Councilmember Johnson?
Are we, when you say opaque glass, are we talking still transparent opaque glass, such that it allows light in, but you can't see through? Or are we talking false panels like we've had on other buildings?
It would really be an opaque panel, and as I said, there would, you know, likely be shelving along that wall. So you wouldn't really be able to see anything in, into the building with what, what they're proposing.
Would it allow light to the inside of the building, though, from the inside?
No, not, not if they have shelving up against it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grishkovich?
Very similar question I was gonna ask on that glass. Will, will light be coming through, I mean, from the seat, I mean, at night, does light shine?
I mean, from the seat, I mean, at night, does light shine through, or is this like a panel?
It would really be an opaque panel.
Okay.
So opaque isn't, opaque isn't the same as translucent, then. It doesn't let light through. Okay, all right. A little lost on that definition there, so.
It's a fake window.
Yeah.
And then the other.
So not opaque, fake.
Fake.
Got it, okay.
The other question, and just a clarification that I have, is what makes you more comfortable with this is some of the trees and landscaping that's going to remain there. What if the applicant builds the building and says, "Well, we don't want any of that on there"? Do we have anything to say about that?
We did. One of the conditions of the site plan approval was that if, you know, as construction is a little farther along, if for whatever reason they decide that they want to remove some of those trees, that the applicant does need to provide a tree preservation plan and kind of work with staff to ensure that at least some of those trees are preserved.
Similar coverage would remain, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. This is just the Mr. Brown Show tonight. In planning case 22-3, consider introduction of an ordinance rezoning 3745 Main Street, Vista Outdoor.
Right, and this is our fifth and final planning item on tonight's agenda, so made good progress. Yes, so this is at 3745 Main Street, just west of Round Lake Boulevard. As you likely know, Vista Outdoor, also known as Federal Cartridge Company, operates a very large manufacturing facility primarily in the city of Anoka, but Vista does own about 75 acres in the city of Coon Rapids at this location, south of Highway 10, west of Round Lake Boulevard. They're proposing to rezone about 29 or so of those 75 acres from industrial with the North Star Business Park overlay to just industrial. And that, the reason for that is to accommodate a new warehouse that we have received a site plan application for. Now, the Planning Commission is expected to consider that at its February meeting. Vista is interested in moving forward with that project yet in 2022. So this is really the first step toward accommodating that. You can see on the screen here, the existing zoning of the site, of course, industrial. That dashed line represents the North Star Business Park overlay district. And basically, the history behind that was that about 13 or 14 years ago, city staff started to have some conversations with federal about the long-term future of that land. As you're likely aware, a lot of it is vacant, a lot of it is used for small, very small storage facilities, often called powder huts, some of which would be moved to the Anoka side of the facility if the site plan for the warehouse is approved. But we always knew that eventually, given that there is very intense retail development nearby, that for at least some of that site at some point in the future, you know, it would be logical for it to transition to other uses. So in about 2009, the council put in place that overlay district, which basically allows federal's existing operations there to continue, but also allows for eventual transition of the site to other uses. And by allowing federal's use to continue, the existing overlay district only allows for very minimal expansions. It allows for addition of some of those powder hut-type buildings, you know, 6,000 or so square feet. So a larger warehouse would not be allowed under that overlay district. So that's why they're proposing to remove a portion of the site from the overlay district. Of course, any application for rezoning or approval of rezoning has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. You can see here, the future land use map from the comp plan does guide the area still for industrial development, although there is some text in the land use chapter that kind of goes over what I just said, where some of the current use of the property is acceptable, but in the long term, we do want to see the site transition to other uses. And here is a master plan graphic that Vista or federal provided to kind of show us how, you know, even with this rezoning, it's still possible to realize that longer-term vision of transitioning to other uses on the site. So you can see just in the area of the site that doesn't have any color over it, you can see the outline of the proposed warehouse building there. The red, generally along Round Lake Boulevard, would represent a retail or commercial uses in the future. You might remember, actually, a couple of years ago, the council considered a proposal for a commercial development on a portion of that land that never materialized. So Vista is certainly willing to entertain sale or transition of some of that land to other uses. And then farther west, more along Highway 10, they've showed how some of that area can transition to more, whether it's office or R&amp;D hotel-type supportive uses in the long term. There's still, you know, 47 or so acres of land that can be used for those other uses. So again, the required findings for rezoning applications. First, effect on public health, safety, order, or convenience. You know, in this area, as I said, we have very high-intensity commercial development, roadways that can handle a lot of traffic. So, you know, less intense industrial uses generally can be accommodated by that infrastructure. Effect on present and potential surrounding land uses, again, industry on this site does allow for transition to other uses, is compatible generally with those existing commercial uses. And then finally, conformance with the comprehensive land use plan and the applicable development district. So again, with that master plan, we've kind of outlined how this still allows for achievement of that eventual vision. And here, this is all outlined in the staff report as well, just the relevant policies from our 2040 comprehensive plan. Again, at the top there is that language that addresses transition to those other uses. And the last sentence you can see there is, however, continued industrial use is appropriate in the short and midterm. Some other policies in the land use chapter, you know, providing a supply of commercial and industrial land in certain areas, employment centers concentrated in those areas, and the Federal Cartridge site is called out specifically, encouraging intense use of remaining industrial land, increase the city's tax base, enforcing performance standards. We feel that an industrial building at this location can provide the screening and such to not provide any negative impacts on surrounding uses. And then finally, economic development policy 1-1, promoting the retention and expansion of existing businesses. Of course, federal or Vista is a longtime member of our community, and allowing them to expand in places generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we have some representatives both here in person and on Zoom. Can answer any questions if you have them.
Very good, thanks, Mr. Brown. Yeah, they're celebrating their 100th anniversary this year, so.
In the summer.
Long-term folks, that's for sure. And when you look, when you look at the aerial, it's really easy to justify the need of a warehouse, when you can count almost 100 semi-trailers sitting there holding product just in the picture. I've been very impressed with how well-thought-out this was, how you with staff worked with them, with the planning commissions work on this, and I like the project. I like it a lot.
Here, here.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Brown, or anybody from Vista?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
So it's considered introduced.
Thank you for the reminder. I kept waiting for a motion. All right, so.
Your Honor, if I might just.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to say this for the current council and the future council. The fact that Vista and Federal Cartridge are continuing to invest in this community has not gone unnoticed. They've been a wonderful community partner. They've employed big sections of Anoka, Coon Rapids, Andover, Blaine, Ramsey, et cetera, and just a wonderful partner to work with. And I think it's actually a very exciting thing to see them want to continue to build and improve that property that's there. So anything we can do to help them, I'd like to do it if it's not incompatible with the city's vision.
Absolutely. So in planning case 22-3, we will consider the ordinance for rezoning 3745 Main Street, Vista Outdoors, introduced. Is that all you need on that one, Mr. Brown?
I think so. This will come back in two weeks for final approval.
Then there's going to be trouble then. I'm sure of it. All right. And we're on to item 17, consider introduction of an ordinance revising Chapter 3-220 Sustainability Community Commission. In 2020, the city council requested that the Sustainability Commission edit its governing ordinance, Chapter 3-220, to better reflect their current structure and work program. In 2021, the commissioners and staff compiled and edited ordinance that includes the following changes. Changes the name from the Sustainability Community Commission to Sustainability Commission, which is what I think I've always been calling them anyway. Removes specific criteria for composition of commissioners, i.e., requiring that a certain number of commissioners be business owners or live in certain neighborhoods. It updates the functions of the commission to reflect the current work program and approach, and it updates the meetings section to be consistent with the ordinance chapter. In December 2021, council discussed several potential changes to city code language related to city commissions, and the changes related to the Sustainability Commission are being introduced now as they are ready for consideration. Additional changes related to other areas of the code will be discussed with council in the near future. Does anybody have any questions on this?
Nope.
So then, in the case of an ordinance to amend Chapter 3-220 about regarding the Sustainability Community Commission, we will consider that introduced. And we are on to item 18, to consider 2021 and 2022 insurance renewals and Resolution 22-26, establishing limited cleanup and property damage protection for sewer backups. Mr. Stemwell, do you want me to read these bullet points, or?
Ms. Hanson.
Fran, if you want to summarize, please.
Mr. Mayor, council, hi. Staff is recommending accepting a cult from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust for property liability insurance for the 2021-2022 year. The total proposed premium for 2021 is $394,157, which is an increase of approximately $15,500 over last year. This increase is primarily due to the slight increase in the premium for our automobile coverage to maintain that $5,000 deductible we've been covering for the past couple of years. I recommend this deductible because it has saved the money, saved the city considerable money when a vehicle is totaled, and we only have to pay $5,000 when the replacement is usually anywhere between $20,000 to $50,000. So this has paid off for the city. The premium also uncovers our liability insurance for our property, and it covers $157.9 million in buildings, their contents, and property in the open, which is our city parks. Also, Resolution 22-26 is to continue carrying our sewer backup insurance, which allows our city residents to collect up to $10,000 for sewer backups that are considered no fault of the city. In 2021, we had just one claim under the no-fault coverage, but I will say in 2022 now, we are experiencing several claims that are being processed right now. And I believe this has been a very favorable ordinance, I mean, resolution for our residents over the years, so. I will answer any other questions.
We did learn one limitation of this, that this is to supplement the homeowner's insurance. And so one of those current residents, his insurance agent said, "Oh, you don't want to turn this in. Your rates are going to go up." And it was like, it's only like $2,000, and he's going, "Ah." So I thought, oh, well, that was interesting. It says right in here. Mr. Stemwell.
Mayor, council, I was going to make that point, so this is an appropriate time. Each year, we tend to make sort of an announcement about that, that it's really worth talking to your insurance agent about what coverage you might have in a sewer backup scenario. Because when it does happen, sometimes what people find out is they don't have any sort of coverage, or it's limited. And even with that $10,000, in certain situations, that's not going to cover the damage that may be caused. In the case of our insurance, as long as we're not negligent, we're not paying for that either, except for this $10,000. So it's really worth understanding that. We have had some communications in past city newsletters and elsewhere about that. Probably good for us to put that in the newsletter again sometime soon as a reminder, advertise in other areas.
Very good. All right. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I will make a motion authorizing the following three items. Purchasing insurance renewal through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, LMCIT, maintaining statutory legal limits of $1.5 million per occurrence, and authorizing the Resolution 22-26, purchasing sewer backup liability insurance.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Grishkovich. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. And more riveting information, consider our 2022 workers' compensation coverage. Fran.
Mr. Mayor, council, the city is carrying, has been carrying workers' compensation coverage through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, which is now up for renewal for the 2022 year. Workers' compensation insurance covers city employees injured on the job and pays for lost time and medical bills. The premium is based on wages with unique rates charged to each worker's classification, like clerical, police, fire, and streets. Higher rates are charged to the worker compensation classifications for the higher-risk categories. Workers' compensation rates for 2022 have risen for the second year in a row, and most of this is because of the cost incurred from the increased number of end size of the post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD-related claims, that have been an issue with the league for the past couple of years. For the workers' compensation coverage, we have a few options. The 2022 regular premium is $1,48,341, which is a 34% increase over 2021. Again, this is the second year, this has been over 30% increase. So the city has an alternate choice, and that is what we are recommending tonight. We're recommending you approve the retro pay plan again. We've carried this plan since 2014 consecutively. With the minimum claims, the city could reduce the regular premium to a minimum premium of only $305,984, which is a potential savings of $742,357 if our claims are low, versus the maximum payment above the premium, the regular premium. And that maximum amount would be $1,547,780, and our potential additional costs would be $499,439. This retro plan is still a good plan for the city because, over the past five years, we have saved the city approximately 1.1, slightly under $1.1 million by taking this retro plan, because our claims and our modification factor have decreased, and now we're just slightly increasing a little bit within this year and last year. Our modification factor is still under a 1, which is considered getting risky. So it's only at, I believe, .79. So we're still doing quite well, even though we have had a few extra claims. So that's about all I have, if you have any questions.
That makes sense to me. Anybody have any questions, Ms. Hanson? Mr. Stemwell.
Mayor, council, if I may, just in sort of the broader world of workers' compensation, you know, what the league is experiencing, as you can see, with 34% increases a couple years in a row, isn't really a sustainable approach. So the League Insurance Trust is working hard to work with the legislature to try to identify other potential funding methods.
methods specific to police and fire PTSD-related claims, because that's where a majority of these increases are being seen. Certainly, we've had some experience with that here in Coon Rapids the last three or four years, much more than previous to that. And part of that's based on legislative changes that occurred five years ago or so. But the reality is, every city or municipality with a police department in particular is experiencing those claims, hence why it's going up for the entire trust, and our mod factor hasn't changed much. So that tells you, even though we've had claims, everybody else has as much or more during that same period of time, you know, within reason. So just an awareness thing for you, you might have opportunities with legislature in the future to have a discussion about that, or at least a little more awareness of what's going on.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Reverend Geisler?
I will make a motion that we select option one of the retro-rated plan with the League of Minnesota Insurance Trust for our workers' compensation coverage.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Reverend Geisler?
I'd just like to thank Ms. Hanson for all the work that they do, you know, doing all the figuring and, you know, how much is, where do we fit, and how do we, you know, save the city money, but yet protect and be able to cover our workers? And, you know, that I think over the years, you've done a great job to make sure that we've got the coverage, our, you know, people who need it get the coverage, and yet we're being very fiscally responsible. So, thank you.
Yeah, that's no small feat, saving over a million dollars on this last couple of years, yeah. All right, further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 20, consider resolution number 22-7/8, accepting plans and specs for the 2022 well rehabilitation and authorizing solicitation of bids. Mr. Hammer, you want to give us the thumper on that one, or?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, counsel. This is our annual program. We're nearing a regular rotation where we get to rehab a well on either well field, so we're not trying to take out multiple ones at each location. So we're looking at one for the east plant, or two for the east plant, one for the west plant, and then now we've recently added in booster pumps in the well, in the plants themselves. So we look at doing four items each year on an eight-year rotation. And so we're not quite there with that full rotation, but we're getting closer. This is this year's program. If you recall, every year, we budget to the worst-case scenario, that everything's gonna fail in all of these locations. There's typically budget left over in the end. So this year's program is queued up and ready to go. We just need your authorization to move forward to bid the project, and we'll be back to see you in March with some recommendations for award. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Reverend Carlson?
Make a motion and we adopt resolution number 22-7/8, accepting plans and specifications for 2022 well rehabilitation and authorize the solicitation of bids.
My second. Motion by Carlson, second by Hernandez Jr. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are at the open-mic public comment portion tonight. And I'm pretty sure that's not why Grant is sitting over there, so.
I like the view, then. The public gets to see that there's no one here for a public comment.
And I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. We are right in the middle of Snowflake Days. I hope everybody has their Coon Rapids newsletter at home, because you have a whole page of Snowflake Days events in here. And I know the next thing I've got coming up is the community waffle breakfast on Sunday, but we've got stuff before that, too.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I think it's key to let people know that the parades that were scheduled this week, because of the wind chill and whatnot, they've been rescheduled. So you can watch the parades next week, Tuesday the 8th, and Thursday the 10th of February.
Very good. What do you got there, Mr. Stemmott? Anything else for other business?
Mayor, counsel, I was just gonna add on to the Snowflake Days fun. There's Family Fun Day at the Ice Center on Sunday, the 6th, as well. So from 3:00 to 5:00, there's cookie and canvas art projects, 4:30 to 5:30, outdoor skating, ice bowling, dice games, 5:30, 7:30, free public skate at the indoor rink, all sponsored by the Snowflake Days Committee and Community Strength Foundation. So lots of fun to be had. You can find more on our website and/or by searching Coon Rapids Snowflake Days, and you'll get there.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Reverend Geisler?
So a couple of other things, and, you know, I don't know if Mr. Fornellius will want to add anything to some of this, but, you know, we talked about earlier in our meeting about the Sustainability Commission, and they're updating kind of their charter. There's a lot of great things happening in the community from that perspective. Our recycling center is now accepting paint. And if you've ever painted something and gone, "How do I get rid of this?", we now have a place locally that you can drop off your paint at the recycling center. So that's great.
Don't pour it down the drain.
Don't put it down the drain. Mr. Hammer will not like you.
Don't do that.
You will not like that yourself at home. That will not, I don't think that goes far.
Right, right.
We hear about it.
Yep. The other piece is, you may have heard that the city now has a silver designation for Soul Smart. And that program is just really for us to help our residents, to help you, anyone who's interested in looking at going solar in their homes, that designation will help us support you in that effort. So again, you know, being a sustainable and community is a great thing in that we're looking forward and protecting our planet. So appreciate all of the work that the Sustainability Commission and Mr. Fornellius's team do with regard to the recycling center and all of the efforts to be green.
Awesome. Yes, mayor?
Counselor Reverend Carlson?
On a sad note, I want to mention the loss of one of our wonderful community servants, Bob Lewis. Wow, he was our mayor from 1982 to 1989, and he was a teacher in District 11 for 27 years. Bob Lewis was a gentleman and a wonderful servant to this community. He passed away at the age of 92 in Baxter, Minnesota.
He was mayor for eight years, I thought, was the, wasn't it?
He doesn't have the years in the obituary.
All right. And not to go back, but as part of Snowflake Days, we crowned a new Miss Coon Rapids and a new Miss Coon Rapids Outstanding Teen. So congratulations to our new Miss Outstanding Teen, Julia Schumacher, and our new Miss Coon Rapids sage, I'm gonna guess it's Hovet, H-O-V-E-T. So we're looking for, they've already seen them participating in things, so they're already in with both feet. It's awesome. All right, other business to come before council this evening?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.